This regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. Just want to extend a warm welcome to those present and to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personal appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems with individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I just ask right now if you would turn off your cell phones to silent if you have not already done so. We really do appreciate the time that you have taken to join us and for your interest in Waco ISD.
Este junta regular de Waco ISD esta convocada. Les extiendo un amable bienvenidos a todos los que están presentes y los que nos observan por televisión. También les quiero compartir que todas las conferencias están disponibles en la página de Waco ISD YouTube el lunes después de la conferencia. En esta página pueden escoger su idioma, así toda la información que fue descargada está disponible para todos. Por favor, de apagar su teléfono celular, les agradecimos el tiempo que compartimos con nosotros y su interés en Waco ISD.
Okay, we will move on to public comments. Okay. Item three is our...
Moment of silence?
So if you would just bow your heads with me as we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, meditation. I'll move on to item four. I moved them a little out of order. We'll do our oath of office. If we could have our people who are going to be taking the oath, please come down. For another dais.
Mr. Patton.
Yes. Vidonya, too.
Yeah.
Yes.
As a notary public, I am honored to administer the oath of office. Please raise your right hand. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, please repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear...
I, Jim Patton, do solemnly swear...
...that I will faithfully execute the duties...
That I will faithfully execute the duties...
...of the Office of Trustees...
Of the Office of Trustees...
...of the Waco Independent School District...
Of the Waco Independent School District...
...of the State of Texas...
Of the State of Texas...
...and will to the best of my ability...
And will to the best of my ability...
...preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution...
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution...
...and laws of the United States...
And the laws of the United States...
...and of this state...
And of this state...
...so help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you and congratulations.
Well, gentlemen, I'm so glad that you guys are here and want to welcome Jim to the Board. We will move on to our Pledge of Allegiance. If we could have our pledge leaders come to the front.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will move on to item number five, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the reorganization of the Board of Trustees. I will entertain a motion for 5A President. Okay, that's a motion. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Vidonya. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I will entertain a motion for 5B Vice President.
I nominate Jose Vidonya.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Grant.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Ochoa. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. I will entertain a motion for 5C Nomination for Secretary.
Nominate Jeremy Davis.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Guillory. I'll second that for Jeremy Davis for Secretary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Wonderful, our slate of officers is there. And we will move on now to our special recognition. So if our Board members can meet us in front of the dais, we have some special guests to recognize.
Each month, one campus selects two students to lead the Pledge of Allegiance at the regular business meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. For the month of May, Eddie Favela and Allison Roque Ramírez from Cresview Elementary School were selected for this honor. Eddie is in fifth grade, and his favorite subject is science. He enjoys drawing and playing Minecraft. When he grows up, Eddie wants to be an astronomer. Thank you to his mother Alma and his sister Gisela Favela for being here and sharing your wonderful son and brother with us. Allison is also in the fifth grade. She loves reading and science and participates in choir. She also likes to draw and cook and recently participated in the Children's Music Festival. When she grows up, Allison wants to be a teacher. Thank you to Allison's mother, Jessica Ramírez, for being here tonight and sharing your amazing daughter with us. And thank you to Assistant Principal Alvarado for being here to support your students tonight. Our next item is our DELL Scholar. The DELL Scholars Program was designed to provide a support system for challenges that many students face while pursuing a degree. DELL Scholars receive the following financial and other support: $20,000 scholarship, personalized multifaceted support for the academic, financial, and emotional life changes, a laptop computer, textbook credits in the amount of $500 annually for four years, Scholars Resource Network, and access to teletherapy services that connect students to professional counseling. Our Waco High School DELL Scholar is Lily B. N. Congratulations. Our next item is our UIL State Theatrical Design Contest. The UIL State Theatrical Design Contest was held in May in Round Rock at the Round Rock Performing Arts Center. The purpose of the contest is to foster appreciation of good theatrical design, to increase the number of schools which have adapted technical theater as an academic subject in school curricula, and to learn to win or lose graciously while fostering a friendly rivalry among schools. This year, students challenged to design for Mary Shelley's Frankenstein adapted by Dorothy Louise using the prompt "What makes the story relevant to today's audiences?" Students from all over Texas submitted designs as well as a 750-word essay justifying how their designs fit the prompt and were judged for the opportunity to advance to state contest. Our competition spans both 5A and 6A schools. Waco High School had three students selected to present their work at state. Claire Prather and Helen Goodman were among only 40 students selected to present their costume designs, and Lily Howell was among only 26 selected to present scenic designs. Congratulations. The One Act Play Honor Crew was initiated in 1977 when the State Office invited Austin ISD Theater Arts students to serve on the State Meet One Act Play Contest Production Staff. In 1982, this highly successful program was made available to students from all UIL member high schools. Students selected as honor members of the State Meet One Act Play staff are involved in a learning experience available to state meet participants. Fifty-two students applied for the Honor Crew, and only 35 students were selected for this honor at the 4A, 6A State Meet. Eleanor Rhodes and Andrew Eggers applied and were accepted to represent Waco High School as stage crew and staff for the State UIL One Act Play 4A, 5A, and 6A Contest at Round Rock ISD Heartfold Performing Arts Center from May 3 through May 6. And thank you to Liz Wise for being here with these students tonight. And next, last but not least, is our Community Partner Award. Each month, Waco ISD recognizes a community partner making a difference for students with the Waco ISD Award for Outstanding Community Partners. The recognition celebrates the theme of the 2022-2023 School Year Lead From the Heart and acknowledges the impact that our community partners make in the lives of our students and staff. In May, the district is recognizing the Education Service Center, ESC Region 12. ESC Region 12 is a nonprofit service organization devoted to supporting educators and school personnel in their efforts to improve student outcomes. They are passionate about helping schools ensure an equitable education for every student and maintain efficient economical operations. Here tonight to accept are Dr. Jerry Mays, Executive Director, Deputy Executive Director Charlene Simpson, and Field Service Agent Stephanie Kachera. ESC Region 12 is playing a major role in offering standard reunification method simulation exercise to Waco ISD and their region at University High School this summer. The training hosted by ESC Region 12, Waco ISD, and the I Love You Guys Foundation will be available to campus staff and administration, Waco ISD police officers, and district personnel. They also offer various training and professional development such as Lead Like a Champion, Leadership Series, and Principal Leadership Institute, sometimes at no cost to the district. The ESC Region 12 supports Waco ISD at all levels and are always there to help. In September, ESC Region 12 will be hosting our Guamah 10-year anniversary celebration. Thank you so much.
Dr. Kincanon.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I have a few items this evening, pretty short and sweet, but some good things happening. I want to start with the Education Foundation enrichment grants. The Education Foundation Surprise Patrol had a busy two days delivering checks to 46 teacher grant recipients. This year, the foundation awarded a record $154,995, bringing the total amount of grants funded over the past decade and a half to more than 2.15 million. Those impressive numbers are thanks to the incredible generosity and support of the Waco ISD community, the hard work and dedication of the foundation's board, and our community partnership coordinator, Stephanie Hines. Some really exciting projects in this group, in these 46 grants, and I just want to thank our Board members who showed up and celebrated, walked a lot of miles to celebrate with teachers. It was really special. And thank you, a special thank you to the Education Foundation for their work on accepting and reading those grants. Thank you, Mr. Patton, who sat on the foundation board and participated in that, and we're truly thankful. Legislative update, I'm going to be short and sweet, but we're in the closing days of this legislative session, and each day has some significance as a final deadline for bills or resolutions to proceed through another step in the process. May 29th, Memorial Day, is the final day of the regular session, and I know many like me are ready for this session to be over. It's not coming soon enough. Threats of special sessions has been issued and widely reported, but unfortunately, from what I've seen and read, those threats are not to address what we know are the real priorities in public education, not only in Waco ISD but across the state. And some of those are increasing the basic allotment to fully fund schools and then address the impacts of inflation, to provide meaningful, flexible funding for school safety and mental health supports. That has not happened. And teacher retention and compensation needs. The Board will hear more about the outcomes of the legislative session at the SLI Conference in June, and then we may bring some information back to share with you as well at the June Board meeting. It's been an interesting session, a lot of bills and not a lot of progress, really. It's been a challenge to keep up with them. In some more exciting news, next week is graduation, and we're excited about celebrating the class of 2023. Waco High School ceremony is at 7:30 PM next Thursday, May the 25th. Universities is on Friday at 8:00 PM. Both of those will once again be at the Waco ISD Athletic Stadium, where we will be enforcing a clear bag policy. We'll also have live speakers this year for the first time since the pandemic, and Board members are requested to arrive one hour prior to the ceremonies. We will have dinner for you before the events. And we do have a Board member who has a son graduating. Congratulations, Mr. Grant's son is graduating. I don't think we have any others this year, but I know that's a special time for you all, and it'll be a lot of fun celebrating. Brazos High School's graduates will have their ceremony on May 30th, and that's going to be at the Antioch Community Church at 6:00 PM. If you were at last year's graduation for Brazos at University High School, it was a little overcrowded. So we've moved the location this year to allow for more family guests. And I wanted to mention that Dr. Gutierrez will be standing in my place for that ceremony as I will be traveling for my daughter's wedding and won't be there that evening. So thank you, Dr. Gutierrez, for that. And then finally, looking ahead to next school year, we have set the date for our annual Back to School Family Fest. That will be held on Saturday, August the 5th. That's from 9:00 to 12:00. And as you know, we have a lot of construction going on at Waco High School, so we don't think that's the best place to try to bring a lot of guests into. So our plan is to use University High School as one location for the single district-wide Family Fest. There's a lot of real estate there, a lot of spaces for us to do that, and so we'll use different sections of the building and maybe overlap in some. So any student who's registered for the event will receive a voucher for a free clear backpack with school supplies while those last, and we will again partner with the Waco McLennan County Public Health District to provide all school required immunizations and COVID vaccines to students. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on any of those items.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you, Dr. Kincanon. We'll move on to item eight, information, items, and reports. Are there any questions on 8A or 8B? I will say I was kind of excited to see that the walk-in freezer cooler is 83.3% done. I think I've been hearing about that for like the last five years. So I was really excited to see that. Okay, hearing no other questions. We'll move to consent agenda, item nine, consent. Is there any items that need to be pulled for discussion? Okay, seeing none. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll move that we accept the agenda as it's presented.
Thank you, Mr. Vidonya. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Guillory. Are there any questions, discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. We will now move on to item 10, review, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the schematic design of Kendrick Elementary. Mrs. Vareta.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Kincanon, Board members. In our April meeting, O'Connell Robertson presented the schematic design plans for both Kendrick Elementary School and South Waco Elementary School. Since that meeting, we met with representatives of the Southern Little League regarding our need to use some of the fields during the construction process. We've also worked on cost estimates with the construction managers at risk for each school, which then led us to return to the Project Executive Committee to confirm some priorities. O'Connell Robertson has a presentation on both schools, but we're only asking for schematic design approval on Kendrick this evening. On the South Waco Elementary School project, we are carefully evaluating the scope of the project as well as the options to address the needs at South Waco. So at this time, and when we do come back with design development, we will be bringing a complete budget back to you to show you the cost of both of these projects before we move any further forward. Okay?
Good evening, everyone. I'll be kicking this off here if we'll go on to the next slide. Thank you again for having us here. We're looking at presenting the schematic design update. As Gloria indicated, we've continued through the process of design, continuing those conversations, going deeper, collaborating amongst the community, and continuing to move that forward. So we've kind of got three sections of the presentation on the next slide that you will hear about Kendrick Elementary School, a little bit about the discussion around Little League and how that's supporting the construction, but how we're also supporting them at South Waco, and then an overview of the project schedule. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Doug to run through some of the details again.
That one not working? Oh, I turned it on. Good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
So as Jared mentioned, we'll start here with Kendrick Elementary School. Same graphics that y'all have seen in the past. Added a couple notes here on the slide for just highlighting some key site components here. So this is showing the proposed new Kendrick Elementary School design. So that is going to improve the queuing along Kendrick. So where there's very little to no queuing now, we are going to have substantially more off-street queuing space for parent drop-off. Perimeter site fencing to enclose all the play areas that complies with the recently updated TEA security standards. And then as well, I mentioned this last time, we do have the opportunity, because of where the existing facility is at and where we're proposing the new facility, to maintain a lot of those existing trees. So there's a lot of really good live oaks and other native specimens on that site, so we're doing what we can to maintain those. Showing the floor plan again, just as a reminder, a portion of the facility is planned to be two stories, and so you'll see that second floor plan there in the upper right-hand corner. But that dark blue represents your primary classroom wings, and so one of the goals with the Project Executive Committee and as we worked with the principals was every grade level has their own classroom wing, and so we've been able to address that in this design. And then your core facilities, your cafeteria, and your gym, library, and your main entry are congregated there in the middle. And so we are working with the PEC as we move forward to start to define some of the more specific requirements of each space. So we'll get into what's the proper amount of casework in each room, how do backpacks want to be stored, where do all the sinks want to go, what is, you know, what is the height of the marker boards, and we'll get into all of that. So again, we're just here at schematic design today, and we've got lots of time to continue to get feedback on those more specific items. So just to share again, the exterior concept that was approved by the PEC, got a really nice mid-century feel to it, keeping it that neighborhood community, didn't want anything that was too industrial or too cold. There's a lot of different approaches to school design, and we really worked with the group on this one to make sure we kept it in line with their vision of how they wanted their school to feel for students every day. So do you want to share, before we step, I'll do in another brief summary of South Waco after this, but do you want to share some of our discussion that we had with Southern Little League here a few weeks ago? One of the big things, and you'll see it in one of the subsequent slides, but we talked about was the use of the existing baseball and softball fields for potential lay-down area for construction. And so with how tight this site is, the contractor needs lots of space to be able to lay down materials and stage, you know, their construction sequencing and have a construction trailer, and you know, operationally, space is needed to, you know, complete the job. And so we talked with that group and helped identify, okay, where would be the least impactful, which fields would be the least impactful? Obviously, any of their fields creates an impact, and so we had a really good discussion with them to not only talk about, okay, what's the best solution at South Waco site, but then how can the district support them and their activities through other facilities? So we talked about utilizing high school facilities or utilizing the athletic complex facilities and working with Southern Little League to make sure that the shared use of those is understood by everybody and that the schedules align. So multiple parts and pieces there of, you know, working with the contractor on the sequencing and the staging, but then also Waco ISD working with them to, you know, coordinate their league from, I think it's February through June, so right in the middle of our proposed construction window. I can pause here for a minute if anybody has any questions on this. I know we talked about it last time.
I do, Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
My question, so have we talked to the city at all? Because to me, I just look at this as an opportunity for us to work that out between Waco ISD and the city as far as what's going to happen with this space that Southern Little League's fields are. My worry is that after this is all over, it'll just go back to its current state, which is not really good and not really usable for Southern. So what is the end result of that discussion? Have we worked it out with the...
At the completion of construction?
Yeah, the completion of construction. Is the city going to maintain the fields? Or are we as a district going to be responsible for that? Like, how can we make sure we come out of this better than we are right now?
Sure. And I can as well, I can just speak to, you know, we, anything that we do as part of the construction activities would fall under the scope of the work, right? So if we're, for example, the fields, they're shown where we have potential lay-down area, you know, if those are utilized for construction, there's going to be some work that has to be done. If you deserve, you know, sidewalks or, you know, accessible routes, we've got to make sure that those go back in to meet current codes and things like that. Gloria, do you want to speak a little bit to that?
So the city, the land is owned by us, by Waco ISD, and Southern Little League is responsible for taking care of all of the...
is responsible for taking care of all of the facilities that are there and for providing the facilities that are there. So the city of Waco is not involved in this site. So we haven't spoken with them about it. What we did discuss with, in the group was looking at other sites within Waco that we're aware of that might be able to be improved and returned to function, but that would be by the city. So we would have to ask the city, would they be willing to do that? And so that's one of the things we agreed to investigate further in our meeting with the Southern Little League folks.
So was the agreement, so you're saying the agreement for the use of the fields was between Waco ISD and Southern Little League? It wasn't between Waco ISD and the city of Waco?
Correct.
Wow.
That's a good question.
Yes, Mr. Grant.
I think the challenge here is that the city owns all the other Little Leagues. And so the city manages those properties where Southern uses Waco ISD property and Waco ISD doesn't maintain them to the level that they, Southern probably needs. I'm curious if we could have a conversation with the city specifically going forward so that they would assume the maintenance of those fields. And that may not be O'Connell Robertson's conversation to have, that's the district's conversation. I know that when you put the fields back, yeah, when you put the fields back, you're going to have to put them to current code, which is much different and better than it is now. But I challenge us to have a conversation with the city and report back so that we, one, don't get caught maintaining the fields because we want good fields for Southern Little League for sure. But the city has an easy out if we don't come to an agreement and, and call on them to maintain those fields.
Sure. I, I just want to echo that because I, I requested that at our last board meeting, that we have some kind of joint meeting with the city of Waco. I think we need to work that out because since I've got on the board, this has been an issue. And this is the first time I've heard that the agreement was between Waco ISD and Southern. I think the original agreement that I saw when we discussed this the last time was between the city and Waco ISD. So I think it would definitely help us to get, get it drilled down and maybe come up with a new agreement if that's the case. But I don't think redoing part of the field and leaving it kind of how it is right now, I don't think that's going to benefit South Waco. So I would just want us to have those discussions. Again, it might not even be on y'all's ear, but Dr. Kincanon, Madam President, whatever we need to do on our end to make sure that's taken care of, I think will be in our best interest.
Yeah, I'd be happy to visit with the city about that. We, there is no agreement between Waco ISD and the city regarding this, these particular fields. Remember, we had an agreement with the city on some property exchanges for the, the fields over by Waco High School, the Lake Air, Little League fields. But I'd be happy to initiate the conversation with the city.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Patton.
Um, forgive me because I'm new. When we're talking about Waco Athletics, having the, the Little League using shared use of UHS and the athletic complex there, are we assuming the liability and responsibility for when we allow the, the Little Leagues to play on UHS athletic facilities? And will, will our people clean up after that? Or, or is Southern going to make that, that on?
No. We have, we have, we don't have liability for most things. We have immunity. So, and we have lots of people using our facilities that we have agreements with or that we rent. So this is an agreement that's been in place for some time. And so I don't, I don't see any legal issues. Our attorney's shaking his head no as well, so.
So my, my, I guess my follow-up to that is when, when the Little League is playing on the fields and afterwards, are they cleaning up or are we cleaning up? Who's maintaining after the Little League games?
So that hasn't been discussed yet to that detail. We actually have a meeting scheduled the first week of June with the group again to continue having these conversations and fleshing things out because it was very clear in the last board meeting that this board wanted to have things in writing and, and formalized so that the expectations were right and everybody understood this is what we're going to have at the end. And it wasn't, there wasn't opportunities for misunderstanding. So we're continuing to work through these items as we go forward. We're also looking at other options for lay-down area, but I don't, I'm not very optimistic about that. We've been looking into them and I don't, I don't think they're going to be any better than what we have, so.
Well, and as I said, I'm new, so I, I'm not necessarily privy to all this. And that was just a question, when you allow someone to hold a barbecue in your backyard, you want those people who are holding the barbecue to pick up afterwards?
Yes.
You know, I don't want to have to come and clean up after people using my yard for a barbecue.
I've not heard of any issues since I've been here with any problems with this field, with the, the joint use of it for, not aware of any, any particular concerns other than the fields aren't great for them. Right, that's the only thing I've heard.
Yes, Mr. Ochoa.
The bottom two fields, are those going to be used for the season at all?
Conceivably, they could be used, yes.
And is?
The only ones we're interfering with is the top two.
The, the lay-down area where it's been moved to, is that going to be an issue as far as, well, safety one and then, you know, as far as parents parking to get equipment past that lay-down area?
Yeah, and just realize that this is just a, this is a diagram. It doesn't mean it's going to be exactly like that. There would be gates and there will be ways for people to access the fields, you know, that we develop as we move forward. So this was actually their preferred location for the lay-down area. So when, we had two options when we met with them, and this was the one they preferred more than the other.
Do you generally budget, excuse me, for fencing for a lay-down area?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to.
Yes.
You're not losing much parking on this design right here, yeah?
I'm picturing me as a kid who grew up at Little League baseball fields and I see this big construction site. I really want to play on it.
Yeah.
We can see that.
I just wanted to thank you for having those conversations with Southern. I think that is, obviously you can hear from the board, that is important for our kids to have a place to play. And we know the impact of team sports for kids. And so thank you for continuing in talks with them and, yeah, trying to make this as least disruptive as possible, so. I do have a question and it is a couple of slides back. On the schematic design, you had the cafeteria, the stage, the platform, and then behind that, we had the music room. And I know that for performances, when we went to go visit some of the model elementary schools for performances, that music room was easier to be able to kind of get the kids on the stage and kind of off.
Yep.
One of the, I guess my question is, one of the things that I did hear from a, I don't know if she was an administrator or a teacher, was that sometimes in the cafeteria, it would get loud in the music room because they would hear all the noise from the cafeteria. I was just wondering if there was plans to mitigate that or is that what that little hall is there?
Yeah. Absolutely. So yeah, I'll, the laser works on the screen here, so I can point this little corridor here. And again, this is our schematic design plan. So we're, we're continuing to develop and, and coordinate, you know, door locations and things like that. But what we're actually looking at is a corridor here that separates the two and it, there's going to be two connections that you're not seeing, but there'll be one from inside the music room that kind of shoots directly out onto the platform through these doors here. And then this will actually be a ramp. So if they have equipment, they'll be able to bring it, there'll be a, a big door, they can wheel it out, and then they'll have a ramp to get actually up to the backside of the stage as well. So there'll be an accessible route to the stage and it'll be kind of dedicated and, and back in that corridor so they can, if they're doing a performance or if they have, you know, other activities occurring, they can use that kind of as a back-of-house space.
And that, you do, will that help buffer kind of some of the?
It will, yeah. So you'll have those two walls and it, yeah, two walls basically almost doubles your, your acoustical performance. And so, and there'd have to be some pretty, and elementary schools get pretty loud, but it'll, it'll definitely, we'll make sure to consider the acoustics of that.
Okay. Yeah, no, that was, I didn't look at it close enough and then I saw that little hallway thing and.
I've got a question.
Yes, Mr. Grant.
I'm curious on the egress rules for accessibility with, with an elevator. I know that Providence Heights, I think we just have one elevator there. Do you just have to have, I, I know you have to have two modes of egress in most places, correct? Is it different for handicapped accessibility?
It depends. So if you're talking about a two-story facility, there's a number of different code implications as far as accessible egress. The big picture, I think, answer for this project specifically is we do have one elevator and we will have, through our other means of egress, we will have compliant ways for accessible means of egress out of the building. So it's kind of hard to see in the plan, but at the end of every one of those corridors, you also have staircases. And so that serves the population getting down from the second floor. And then the, there are also provisions in the code that talk about areas of refuge or, you know, the, the phone, you know, adjacent to the, I mean, there's a ton of different ways that we can kind of approach that through our design strategy. And so this building will absolutely comply.
I'm just thinking about a child in a chair.
Absolutely.
If there's just one real mode of egress besides carrying them out. Okay.
Okay. Sorry, yes, thank you.
Yeah, one, one, one more.
So will it be kind of like soundproofing material on the walls in the music room? Would that help? Or is it just the hallway that will prevent the sound?
So typically, the music rooms at the elementary school level, they're not high school band halls, right? But we do, we obviously consider acoustics as a, as a big component, particularly as they're, typically those specials are located in more core areas of the school. So you have to think about, you know, you're across from admin, you don't want that, that sound to get into the offices and disturb people that are working. But then as well, we consider the acoustics on the inside of the classroom. So for, you know, making sure we've got, you know, tectum panels and sound absorption on the wall. So yes, we'll make sure that's addressed.
That'll be with the cafeteria as well, correct?
Correct.
That's where it really needs.
That's where it gets really loud. And even then the gym, sometimes we'll, we'll, you know, we'll work on that so that, you know, kids can actually hear the teacher.
Always a good idea.
All right.
Thank you.
And then I did want to just highlight this slide really quickly as well, just some upcoming activities that are related to the elementary school. So again, Kendrick is a full replacement and so the students are moving off, off-site during the course of construction. And so as Carver moves into their new facility, Kendrick will then kind of follow them and move into Indian Spring to support the construction activities on Kendrick's site. So there's a little bit of a kind of following of, of that, of that process. And then other couple things we discussed at our last PEC, we are going to be attending the field day at Kendrick next week, just as part of our engagement with the students and the community. So we're going to have some teams there and I believe our whole, whole group, whole OC group is going to have representation.
Yes.
And then we talked about as well, opportunities to, as the school year ends, you know, summer comes, everybody gets into vacation mode, how do we make sure everybody has kind of the most recent, up-to-date, hey, here's what's coming as the next year unfolds? And so working with the, the PEC to develop some take-ums in a newsletter, you know, digital way to reach out and make sure that we minimize surprises as much as possible. So can be a little bit hectic at the end of the year, so trying to, to mitigate that. And then again, we're only asking for the Kendrick approval, but do you just want to throw this up again for the South Waco site plan? And I'm not sure if this might be the first time you're seeing this, Mr. Patton, so Gurley Lane at the top, that's going to be how you access the facility if you're a parent. So you've got a planned parent drop-off loop, again, pulling cars off the street for queuing as well as an extension there to maximize that, that distance. We are going to plan to expand the parking lot a little bit. And then right now, the plan in front of you is showing three additions. So this is part of what we're looking at as far as addressing some of the cost concerns on the project is how can we be more efficient with our design and minimize the impact to the program and space? And so one of the things is, can we consolidate those into perhaps two additions? And so we're going to be looking at some strategies that more dramatically affect this current design in order to try to, you know, make the best value decisions we can with the program and the, the campus layout at the end of the day. So when we come back in front of y'all again, it may look quite a bit different to this, but we're going to do what we can to maximize the educational program and space that has been requested through our rounds of discussions with teachers and the principal and the PEC. So again.
Is that plan to scale that you just showed?
Is this planned, uh, generally? Yes, it's a little bit more graphic, but it is generally to scale.
So will the second field that is salvaged be in the middle of a retention pond?
No, this, the blue, the, the detention pond size and actually final location is still being developed with our civil engineer. This was, we identified the low point on site. Typically, your low point's generally where it goes, so they're calculating the actual, you know, volume that that needs to be. So again, current design plan, but definitely going to be addressing some efficiencies and how can we bring this back to within the budget and still address the, the scope and program needs of the project? And then again, just a quick schedule summary here. Both projects in design generally following the same project schedule. Plan to wrap up design here in the fall. That would allow notice to proceed for the general contractors at the end of the year, which would then allow them to begin construction January 24. So Kendrick roughly at 16-month timeframe as far as construction. And then South Waco is a little bit of a, a different animal, so we're still working through that. But right now, targeting around that 12-month timeframe for the majority and depending on some of the scope of the renovation work and sequencing of like how teachers and admin are using the different spaces, may extend that into the spring of '25. But again, that's all kind of contingent on where this, where this rework of the plan modification ends up and, and how that works with the construction schedule.
Got a question. I guess it's for the board. I, I know that Indian Springs has been used as a high school or lower grades of high school and a middle school facility, but I don't believe is an elementary school facility. Are there any modifications that are going to need to be made for, I'm thinking of urinals for a kindergartner or, you know, I'm curious if, if the space design currently is going to require any modifications that, that we need to think through the lens of K1 and 2 versus eighth grade, ninth grade, what it was originally planned for?
I, I've actually done a conversion of a middle school facility for an early childhood space in the past. And so I envision us refreshing some paint and doing some things in the bathroom, lowering some toilets and that kind of thing. We're not going to make a lot of changes to physical spaces within classrooms, but Mrs. Barrera and I have a plan to go walk it and come up with that plan because there will be some things that need to be done and we certainly want it to be nice for the students while they're there.
And will that budget come out of these programs or?
It will.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, it will.
I have short legs.
Those are not great.
I want to say, at the Indian Springs location, I would definitely want us to look at making it more wheelchair accessible. My son's in a wheelchair. We had a very, very hard time visiting Indian Springs Middle School. The elevator was down, the entrances were not wheelchair accessible. I had to carry him and his chair upstairs. So I would just really hope that we address those issues at not only Indian Springs, but all the schools we're working on right now.
We'll take a look at it. You know, we're move, the school's about twice as big as we need for Kendrick Elementary, so there may be some spaces that we actually don't use in this facility when we move elementary students over. So we'll work, that's something that'll be on our summer to-do list in preparation for moving the kids in January.
Dr. Kincanon, is the cafeteria on the bottom floor at Indian?
It is, mhm. It's on the university parks side. There's that little courtyard that's on that.
The library is still in the atrium.
It is in the, it's lat, down lower than the cafeteria, no, cafeteria's lower also. But yes, it's right smack in the middle and it's wide open.
So, yeah, it looks like an atrium kind of. So, yeah, it looks like an atrium kind of thing.
Mhm.
So we're going to move books as well?
We will.
Over books?
Yes. We will have to have the elementary library set up, yes. We'll do that this summer.
Okay.
Or this fall, excuse me.
I just, so for summer programming, because I know at Indian Springs, Carver, they do summer camps throughout the summer, so how would that affect, like, will they have another location to meet with students while we're, they could still be in this, okay.
Yeah, I may have misspoke earlier, the move actually occurs the spring semester, not the fall semester, so I may have misspoke.
So we'll have some space in there for doing what we need to do to prepare for the elementary school, which is really nice. We'll be able to get it set up nice for them before they move, and hopefully make that a, an easy move. It's a little bit of a pain to move your classroom in the middle of a school year, but we'll, we'll make it happen.
That's, are we doing the last thing from Kendrick today?
We will, yes, mhm. We'll still have to work those details out, but we will.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm jumping ahead.
No, 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 you, these are, these are all, these are all great questions.
I've got a learning curve, and I'm not doing right, I guess.
No, you're, you're doing great. This is great discussion. Okay, Doug, is that it?
That's it.
Any other questions?
Still have any other questions?
Okay. Well, then I will entertain a motion for the administration's recommendation to approve the schematic design for Kendrick Elementary School as presented.
Just want to make sure, just to clarify, because I know we had a lot of back and forth on this last time. This that we're approving is not for inside designs of how the school would look, we're just approving the floor painting right now and the outside design.
The schematic design where we're currently at. So I will also point out, you know, that the development of schematic design contract documents is, is also a process. And so, you know, we do still have the opportunity to discuss with our project executive committee and the principals, and they're still going to continue to give input throughout the design process. So things aren't, it's not 100% set the way it is, and we'll always be sure to come back at the milestones to make sure we're communicating any updates with y'all.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yep.
I move that we accept the design of Kendrick Elementary as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vedanya. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we will take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Mrs. Vedanya, Jared and Doug, appreciate it. Okay, we will move on to item number 11, review discussed required district intruder detection audit report findings. Dr. Kinkanen.
Okay. Last summer, on June 1st, Governor Abbott instructed the Texas School Safety Center to conduct random inspections of classroom doors, doing random intruder detection audits, looking for weak points to ensure school, ensuring that school districts follow their emergency operation plans. And so we've been doing those all year long, and we have wrapped those up, and we've had two issues. One was at South Waco Elementary, where the auditor checked an inside door, and when the push bar mechanism was depressed and opened, it didn't fully lock upon its return into the frame. There were no other indicators out of compliance at South Waco. All the interior classroom doors were locked. The campus had their door tracking, where they had checked doors, and all exterior doors were secure upon external inspection. So that was at South Waco. And then at Parkdale, we had a door issue on a, an out, an exterior door on the library that was opened from the outside. And again, that was a latch issue. As soon as the door was opened, the librarian was up and redirected the person who was trying to enter the building to the front office, and of course, they did go to the front office, no issues there. We've checked doors on all of those facilities, but these are really old buildings, and so we'll continue to check them, we'll work on that again some more this summer with our facilities department. So I am reporting that to you this evening, and if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Are there like scheduled, like maintenance, I guess, on the doors, like since we, like, even though we're working on new buildings, they'll eventually be old, so is it kind of just like routine, scheduled?
You want to speak to that?
Where we replace those, or kind of?
So we do have routine checks where we go and just check the doors when we're at, at the school for any other reason. So if one of our technicians is at, at school, they, they look at the exterior doors near where they are. They may not check every door every time they go, but we're kind of doing our own random check as we go. Also, this year, we have replaced several exterior doors that were doing just what this is, which is they're unpredictable, because if it's real humid, the door will swell, and then it won't close properly. I have one of those in my house, too. And, you know, then it dries up, and the, the door's fine, and so the guy goes to fix it, and it's closing fine. You know, that's kind of the challenge that we have. But there is, we do have a maintenance program where we keep track of it.
Yeah. I, I think it's pretty incredible that we, we didn't, I mean, I hate to say that, but we, this is all we had, given the age of a lot of our school buildings. We have a lot of school, old school buildings in Waco ISD, and so unfortunately, we, these two doors were found, but rest of our doors were locked when they inspected them. So we'll continue to work on the maintenance of doors and checking those, and we're doing our weekly, our campuses are required to check doors every week and log that, those are inspected when the auditor comes, and we'll continue that as well. And I think one of the bills actually has that in there to continue these door audits for the future. I think that's potential legislation that's still possible as well.
I have a question.
Mr. Grant?
On, on our facilities, do we have a schedule to replace, even if things, you know, AC's lifespan is 20 years? Do we have a schedule at each school to replace those kinds of things? Or do we replace them when they die and pray that none die that year?
Well, we have a schedule. We have a plan, but it's rare that we're able to afford it. So that's, that's when a, I mean, we've used, we've done a lot of replacement with ESTR funds that really has helped us a lot tremendously around the district. But we're running out, we're out of those now, so, you know, that's something that we're going to need funding for.
We actually conducted a study before Mrs. Barrera got here. Do you remember, Jared? That was about three years ago, and we looked at all of the facilities, and that's the data that we used for the preparation of the bond program, and we looked at all of our maintenance items that needed to be completed. Now, we didn't roll any into this particular bond program because biting off the high school and replacement of three other campuses, and then the South Waco project made that a really large bond program. But had we had more capacity to do so, we would have done some more maintenance work with the, with the bond program. We can certainly do that in a future bond program, too.
Well, and I, I know that funding in schools are an issue. When I was a pastor at Calvary, my mentor, Bill Treadwell, told me the biggest challenge an inner-city church will face has nothing to do with music, has nothing to do with preaching, it has to do with old buildings getting older and churches that can't afford them. And so that message runs through my mind as I walk these campuses now, and one of our biggest challenges is the district will be, and I know we're replacing a bunch of buildings, but the cost of, of deferred maintenance is so much more than if we just stay on top of things and replace things. And so I don't have the genie in the bottle with the money to do those things, but I think as a board, we need to keep in mind that we have a lot of old facilities still, and, and finding a way to plan ahead and fund for those things is going to be really important soon, because we can't have a 300 million-plus bond every year.
Also, tying on to what Mr. Grant said, you know, you said we did have a, a rotating plan, and can you give me a rough number, I mean, off the top of your head, what it would take for like a, a five-year plan of replacing doors? What that, if you did, what, three, three schools a year? The outdoor doors?
I hazard to guess that.
Not off the top of our heads, but what we, the plan we have has doors, it has AC, it has flooring, it's huge.
Roofing. Building envelope, exterior, you know, windows, etc.
But just the specific to the door issues, you were saying, you know, and you're, you're absolutely correct. When it's humid, doors at my school, I was constantly, you know, going through and yanking them, then when they was dry, they would, it would hold. And I know that the doors at my school were old, and found out how much it cost once one of the doors was damaged. And I, just was wondering, specifically, the legislature is wanting us to do these random, random checks, and if we've got doors that are consistently not locking for whatever, if it's a monsoon or it's a drought, it seems imperative that we find a way to do something with that. I'm sorry.
No, this is great.
I'm not meaning to preach.
No, you're.
I mean, that, that is a frustration for my campus administrator when, when we were told those doors have to always be locked, and, you know, you're ultimately responsible.
So, Miss.
And you're going through.
Yeah.
Checking, and then those doors don't always click.
I think it could benefit for the board to know these things, to like be made more aware of like, hey, the, these are the scheduled maintenance operations that we need to do that we don't have the funding for. I think just the board having that knowledge would be, and I know you guys are probably going to bring that to us, but just knowing, hey, in a perfect world, this is the work we would be doing, but this is what we had the budget for, I think that would be very important for us to know.
Making Alex very happy over there right now.
Well, we're going to have another bond sometime down the road, right? And the marketing of that starts now, and communicating to our community and our constituents that, that we have a lot of deferred maintenance issues that are safety issues, that are health issues, that are just as important as these other things, and that, that we need to start caring for our facilities as they were our own, you know, and our own homes. And so for me, that's just a long-term PR move to say, we're not done. We're spending money, but we're not done, and we need you to keep coming and supporting our district.
It really is a safety issue, because if the doors are not locked, and anyone could walk in, it's kind of a child safety issue. So I think if we could even just get creative with how we're currently budgeted for our district, just to see how many of these maintenance operations that we can fund with our current budget would also behoove the board to do so. So I think if we could get, the more information we could get on it, the better we could kind of operate as a board. So I, but I appreciate the work you guys are doing.
Okay, Ms. Vedanya, I do think it would be so nice if the legislators and legis, when they introduced this audit, would also fund it.
Well, I, I would propose that they spend the money that they're doing, that they're using for the audits.
Yeah.
On fixing facilities versus paying people a lot of money to go and check doors.
Yeah.
My opinion.
Yes, just our opinions, but thank you so much for everything you've done.
Sorry.
No, great. Okay, thank you, Dr. Kinkanen and Ms. Vedanya. We'll move on to number 12, announcements. Before we go to announcements?
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Kinkanen, trustees, and welcome aboard, Trustee Patton. As Dr. Kinkanen shared in her superintendent's report, we're just one week away from graduation ceremonies beginning, and the excitement of the countdown to the end of this successful school year is in full effect. You can feel it on the campuses, you can feel it in this building. It's a exciting, hurried time of a lot of celebrations and a lot of special events. Thank you to all of you who have been at several of those, I think, pretty much for the last two or three weeks every night. We continue honoring student achievement with a special event at Waco High School tomorrow afternoon at 2:30 PM. Congressman Pete Sessions will be on hand to celebrate a unique and special class of 2023 Waco High School student. We're waiting for his office to share a little bit more information with us so we can get that to you, but you do have that event on your calendar. Look forward to having you there with us. Tonight, University High School held their spring football game and other festivities, and tomorrow night, beginning at 5:00 PM at Paul Tyson Field, Waco High will be hosting their spring showcase. It starts with a middle school seven-on-seven at 5:00, their spring game, the red and white varsity at 6:00 PM, and then their alumni seven-on-seven at 7:00 PM. It's a full slate, so that's tomorrow night again for Waco High. Saturday, CCMS will perform their musical Annie Junior at 2:30 PM at their campus, if you have a chance to get out and see that. We're heading into just next week, Tuesday, May 23rd, we'll be celebrating our 2022, 2023 outstanding teachers with a luncheon event beginning at 11:00 at the Texas Sports Hall of Fame. The HR department would love to hear from you if you're able to make it. And on the following day, we'll return to that same location and celebrate a luncheon for our retirees. Again, the HR department would love to hear if you're able to make it. In the evening, on that Wednesday, May 24th, we hope you will join us at the Elementary District Science Fair at 6:00 PM at Anthem Stories right over on Austin Avenue. And then we're still within just this one week left. Thursday, May 25th and Friday, May 26th are our final days of school for the school year. Both are early release days, and those evenings, we will be at Waco ISD Stadium for the commencement exercises for our Waco High School and University High School Class of 2023. Look forward to seeing you all there.
Full slate.
Just a week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gurley.
Yes, it's National Police Week, and I want to recognize our, our police chief and our own Waco ISD Police Department.
Yeah.
And please keep our, our men and women in uniform, and your thoughts and prayers, and the families that have lost, police officers, keep them in your thoughts and prayers as well.
Thank you, Mr. Gurley, and I just wanted to welcome back Mr. Vedanya, Mr. Ochoa, and Mr. Patton. I'm excited that you guys are here, and we've got a lot of work to do. So we will be, the board is going to be going into closed session at 7:06 this time pursuant of the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney, and 551.074, personnel matters. We will not take any motion when we come back, in case you would like to leave.
Oh, two, three, okay. And meetings adjourned at 9 o'clock. Thank you.